Call the order to Scott County Board of Adjustment on June 12, 2023. First thing on the agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Hussein?
Yes.
Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Hoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hentges?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Next thing is introductions. On my far left is Brad Davis, our Planning Manager, and Rachel Nosbuck, our Deputy Clerk. In the audience, I see Marty Schmidt as our Zoning Manager, Greg Wagner, our Principal Planner, Nathan Hall, Associate Planner, and Tom Wolfe, our County Commissioner. Okay, next thing. On the agenda is approval of the April 10, 2023 meeting minutes. Everybody said copy these minutes? Any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chair, I have, I think, a correction on page two. Just a little ways down it has, "Chair, we made a motion to close the public hearing, and then motion by Commissioner Watson to close the public hearing." I think there's two people that moved to close the public hearing. I don't think it should be you. You made a motion.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Okay. Rachel, can you, can you fix that up?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
I make a, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Scott County Board of Adjustment meeting minutes for April 10, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say nay.
I've got an abstain.
What's that?
I wasn't at the meeting, so abstain.
Okay, okay. Meeting has been approved. Okay, first item for variance is PL number 2023-031. Request for variance from 150-foot setback to a DNR natural environmental lake to 102 feet to a septic tank, 60 feet to a septic drain field, and 120 feet for home. Applicant is Blake and Christina Rothman in Section 22 of Cedar Lake Township. And Nathan, you going to handle that? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, the subject property is located in Section 22 of Cedar Lake Township. It is located on a natural environment lake often referred to as Nash Lake. Property consists of... All right, Mr. Chair. On the bottom? There we are. Yep, so the property is located in Section 22 of Cedar Lake Township. It is located on Nash Lake, a natural environment lake. And the property consists of these two parcels, neither of which meet the current lot standards for lots on natural environment lakes. The applicant has demonstrated that these parcels were created by the Nash family in the 1960s. That was prior to the establishment of any subdivision zoning shoreline regulations in Scott County. So therefore, they are legal lots of record. The southern parcel has a primitive cabin and a shed that will be removed. And the applicant intends to combine these two into one parcel. The one parcel would then have approximately 1.95 acres above the ordinary high water level. So it still has a fairly limited area to place the home and the septic sites. The applicant intends to place a single-family home. They are proposing at 130 feet to the ordinary high water level, and with a deck that extends 120 feet to the ordinary high water level. They're also proposing a septic system. The primary site would be 115 feet from the ordinary high water level, and the tanks at 102 feet from the ordinary high water level. And the alternate septic field location was found, they did identify it, at 60 feet from the ordinary high water level. Now, the alternate site is something that would only be constructed if the primary site fails, and this is something that could be potentially a few decades off into the future before the alternate site is needed. And the regulations that govern septic systems, they could change in that time, and any septic design would need to be reviewed before the system would be installed. Both Scott County Natural Resources and Minnesota DNR staff have reviewed this application. They note they would like to see the septic site as far away from the lake as possible, but note that the property is non-conforming and not ideal for separation between the lake and the septic system. Cedar Lake Town Board did provide approval for the building permit, however, they did not provide a recommendation regarding the zoning request, as that is their, their policy to not comment on these items. Based on the small legal non-conforming parcel size, Scott County staff is supportive of the variance from the 150-foot setback to 102 feet from the septic tank, 60 feet to the drain field, and 120 feet for a new home. And Mr. Chair, I'll certainly stand by for any questions.
Any questions from this board for Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chair, you would like to see the site further away from the water, or you've said that in your staff report, that you wish it would be further away from the water? Go back over that again, I'm not quite sure I got that right.
Right, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, the alternate site, the primary site is located a fair ways, at 115 feet away from the ordinary high water level. The alternate site is getting quite close. It's not, you know, ideal. Ideally, you know, these would be farther away. But both our Natural Resources staff and DNR staff both made similar comments stating, you know, it is understandable that it cannot be further away in this circumstance.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding this variance. If we give the variance of this 115 feet, will it not pollute the lake?
Oh, yep.
The potential for polluting, polluting the lake water.
Yep, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, our Natural Resources staff did review it, and while they note that it's not ideal, it is exceeding other distances that they might consider. So, our engine did note that it is considerably less distance that is the minimum for a drain field to onsite stormwater or ponding and things of that nature. So, they were comfortable with the requested distance.
So, DNR is okay with this exception?
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner Hussein, yes, the DNR did not provide a formal comment, but they are aware of the request, and they did note that the distance from the ordinary high water level is understandable, that there would need to be a variance in this case.
They did not provide the comment, or they were not asked?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, the DNR was asked for comment, and there was email responses back and forth with, with staff on this. They did not provide a formal memo or a formal comment of that nature.
Mr. Hall, could you move this drive from Stone Brook up so I can see the primary system? Now, I would think you could work with, I'd like the staff to work with, with the owner, but also our staff about, could you swing that primary septic system closer to the property line, swing it over, make it a little longer, a little skinnier? About half of it would meet the 150-foot setback if we did that. And you could even run a little bit south, if the road does go up in the north end of the property line, road comes in the southern end, you could even move it a little bit further south. So, I would like to see staff try to work with the county environmental people and the owner, see if we had moved that around. I'm not against a house being a little closer to the water, but I'd like to get the septic as far away as I can. Recognize the alternate will never be, but by 30, 40, 50 years from now, maybe there'll be different systems in place to handle that. Right now, this is a type III, and I assume it's a mound system, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Could I have the applicant come up and speak for a minute, if you could?
Come up over here?
Yes, please, state your name. You have a little sign and sheet there.
I'll probably do the talking, because I'm more familiar than my wife is. My name's Blake Rothman. So, I have a history of building, really want to build the house, obviously, that's why I'm here.
I'm not against the house. I've been to your property. You have some really nice trees by the house, trying to minimize, you know, taking out as many oaks and white pine as you can. However, could you work with your designer about moving that and work with county staff, moving that septic mound system closer to the property line and shifting it a little bit south?
I don't see why not. Yeah, I don't see why not. It should be able to be moved, one would think, from what you're saying, to go like that.
On the picture here, if you had pivot around that northwest corner?
Yep.
And just swing it over to the east? And just work with staff, let's see if they can get it a little bit further away. If we did that, and let's say you even made it a little skinnier? A little longer? And ran it a little bit further south? If you move your road from coming up in the north end of the right-of-way to the south end, you could even move it another 10 feet further south. I would say half that mound system would probably be in compliance. I mean, it will not be 100%, but it would help.
But at least the main section, piping everything runs underneath there would be.
So if you're comfortable with that, work with the staff, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. We could definitely work with you guys in whatever way we need to really to kind of make the plan work, so.
Any questions for the applicant, will he's up?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? The public hearing, anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Not? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor say nay. Okay, the public hearing is closed, and your wishes on this request.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to try to make a motion that we approve the variance requested as recommended by zoning staff based on the hardship criteria as detailed in this report, and that the applicant worked with staff to get, pivot the property so it's further away... Pivot the property so that it's further away from the water.
The septic.
The septic. Excuse me. Pivot the property so that it's further away from the septic.
Okay, then a motion and a second approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor say nay. Okay. The variance is approved. Okay, next thing on the agenda is request for variance from required 15-foot setback to residential zoning district to 85 feet, and from the required 100-foot county road right-of-way setback to 55 feet to construct an indoor storage facility. Construction is applicant, and applicant is Lake Marion Mini Storage LLC, Section 1 of New Market Township. Greg, you going to present this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, on the screen is the site location map of the subject parcel. It's located in Section 1 of New Market Township, so it's located on the east side of County Road 46 or Pillsbury Avenue, and on the south side of County Road 29, which is 225th Street East. Here's an aerial of the property, and you can see on the parcel to the south is the existing Lake Marion Mini Storage Facility. Lake Marion Storage Facility originally was constructed back in 1999. That was the southern building, or excuse me, the central part of the middle building. And then, the southern building was built back in 2006, and then in 2016, this northern area was added on to. Gary Miller from Lake Marion has since purchased the parcel outlined in red, which was plotted as Lot 7 of Will Born First Edition back in 1972. That plat in 1972 created this parcel as Lot 7, where the central building was Lot 6, and then the southern building was Lot 5. But it also created these houses to the east. Those were all part of the same development. There were 10 residential lots, and then the three commercial lots that you see along the road. The parcel that we're talking about tonight is the northern one outlined in red, which is Lot 7. It was created as a 1.8-acre parcel, which per today's ordinance is a substandard lot. Our minimum lot size in the commercial district today is 2.5 acres. So this is a legal non-conforming lot of record. Mr. Miller, when he built the other two buildings, received variances from the Board of Adjustment for those structures as well. The main issue here is that the County Road 46 right-of-way is rather large compared to other county roads, road rights of way. So there's a 150-foot centerline setback, or 100-foot right-of-way setback, which would be the western line of these properties. And then on the east, since 1996, Scott County has required a 150-foot setback from a residential zoning district. So, the, the two setbacks, when applied to all three of these properties, would actually overlap and prevent any construction of any structure on these properties. So, each time Mr. Miller and Lake Marion has come before the board for a building or building expansion, we have first come to the Board of Adjustment for a variance request, and so that's, that's what we're requesting here tonight. This is a survey showing the proposed structure, the new addition. I should note for this board that there is a conditional use permit on the, on the mini storage facility, and that will be amended, so that request will be subsequent to this application to amend the CUP, but the variance has to come first. So, if I zoom in just a little tighter, okay. So now you can see the, the setback distances. So the requested variance would put the, the western edge of the building 55 feet approximately from the, the county road right-of-way in the west, 102 feet from the county road 29 right-of-way on the north, and then 85 feet to the residential properties on the east. It was noted in the staff report, the lot down here, Lot 6, you can see this line here, it jogs and then jogs in. There actually is more width to Lot 7 than there was to the properties to the south. So previously, variance from the road right-of-way was 43 feet instead of 55, and the variance on the backside here was 60 feet. But because this lot is wider, they're able to, you can see there's a little shift to the alignment of the building, so they're able to meet 55 on the west and 85 on the east. So, we're actually, with the variance request, we're actually, have larger distances to the property lines than the other two buildings. This applicant, or application came to a development review team meeting with the township, county staff. Scott County Highway was supportive of the variance request, mainly because this continues the existing mini storage use, and they have already an entrance off of Pillsbury Avenue that they will use for this building as well. Had Lake Marion not purchased this property, we could be looking at a different business use, requesting another access to a county road, potentially off of County Road 29. So, county transportation is supportive of this use because it continues the use, and they'll utilize the in-place access that's there, so there's no additional access requested to the county road, which is a goal of the county to limit. So as I indicated, upon action on this variance, the applicants would then come before the Planning Commission with a request to amend the conditional use permit, which would include review of stormwater management, landscaping, bituminous, you know, lot coverage and building, building style. But right now, what's being requested tonight is just the variance from the right-of-way on 4629, and then the variance to the, to the property to the east. The applicants did meet with New Market Township on June 6 at their township meeting, and the township did recommend, recommend approval of the variance request. Marty Keim from Keim Construction is here representing the applicant, if you would have questions for him, or I would stand for any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board for Greg?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Greg, go back for a minute. This applicant has had to come for variances every time he's wanted to do something here, and I didn't quite get why that is. Are the setbacks just made and they weren't, they didn't operate well? Go over that again, would you please?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, so, because these lots were created back in '72, the, the setback distances were likely different. Not sure what it was from the right-of-way, but there was no setback to, to the residential properties. Like normally, we have like a 30-foot setback, but in 1996, the county determined that commercial industrial businesses should have a larger setback to residential properties. So, a 150-foot setback was implemented in '96, and when you, when you apply both the road setback and the, the residential setback, they overlap, which would make all the properties non-buildable. So when he first came to build the first structure, which again was the southern portion of the central building back in 1999, there was a variance granted at that time for that structure, and then this one was built in 2006, and then in 2016, he added on to the north part of this building. So, essentially, each time he's doing an expansion or adding another building, you know, we, we have to go through this process.
Listen, I appreciate that, thank you.
And I should note, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that the lots have been combined. So what, what he does is files a deed, so he, he combined the southern two parcels, five and six, into one parcel, and then actually last week, we recorded the deed to combine Lot 7 with the other two, so it makes it one property, which is easier for stormwater and setbacks and other things, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board for Greg? Greg, I have a couple questions, and one, stormwater is being handled on the pond to the north, right? So, be a holding pond there?
Yep, this would be the proposed grading utility plant, so yep, there will be like an infiltration basin to the north, and there is a pond. It's hard to see if I cover it.
Further south?
Yeah, it's under the, it's, it's on the south end of the southern building. There's a stormwater pond, but they're adding this infiltration area on the north side here, so.
And what I can see, you're moving the building a little bit further east. But it looks very, it looks like it'd be very uniform to what's out there already.
Yep, Mr. Chair, it's only, I don't know, five or 10 feet offset, or actually, it'd be 12 feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing, anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. Public hearing is closed, and your wishes on this variance?
Mr. Chair, based on the variance criteria listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the variance from the required 150-foot setback to an existing residential zoning district to 85 feet, and from the required 100-foot road right-of-way setback to 55 feet, noting that the township has recommended approval also.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. The variance has been approved. Anything else, Brad, from us? Do I have a motion to close the Board of Adjustment? Motion and second to close, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. Board of Adjustment is closed, turn it over to Planning Commission.
Good evening, welcome to the Scott County Plan Advisory Commission. I called this meeting to order on Monday, June 12, 2023. Our first item of business is the roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein?
Yes.
Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Hoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hentges?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Thank you. Also present on the dais up here at the end is Brad Davis, our Planning Manager. Next to him is Rachel Nosbuck, our Deputy Clerk to the Board. In the audience, staff members Marty Schmidt, our Zoning Administrator, Greg Wagner, our Senior Planner, and Nathan Hall, our Associate Planner, are present, as well as Tom Wolfe, our County Commissioner, over on that side. Good evening, Mr. Wolf. Our next item of business is the approval of the May 8, 2023 Plan Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes Draft. Commissioners, all consent a copy of that, are there any corrections or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion at this time to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins, a second by Commissioner Huber to approve the minutes. Are there any discussion on that? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? The minutes are approved. Our next item is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission, Board Member, or public member, or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be moved from the consent agenda to consider separately. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening. I will open consent agenda as a public hearing at this time. Is there anyone that would like to have this item? I will read the item, and I'll say, is there anyone who would like to have it removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Number 2023-032, a request to rezone 79.45 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to A3 Agricultural Preservation Density District. Gary and with Paul are the applicants and property owners in Section 22 of Bell Plain. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pika, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hentges, all in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And I have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent, consent agenda as written, and noting that the town board has recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Robbins. Any further discussion? All in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Our first item this evening, we have four public hearings, is a request for rezoning of 10.74 acres from Rural Residential 1, Rural Residential Reserve, to Rural Residential 2, Rural Residential Single Family District, and the preliminary and final plat of Rice Lake Estate Second Edition consisting of four lots on 10.7 acres. J.J.G. Development LLC, applicant, and John and Judy Guncel, property owners, in Section 12 of New Market Township. Mr. Wagner will be making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. On the screen is the site location map of the subject property in Section 12 of New Market Township. The property is located on the east side of Pillsbury Avenue, which is County Road 46. It is accessed through the Walnut Ridge Development off of K Drive. This is Rice Lake Estate Second Edition, so just to point out for the commission, the lots up in this location here, which included this extension of K Drive... the lots up in this location here, which included this extension of K Drive, which goes to the east, that was, first edition was platted back in 2008. This parcel here was a 10.74-acre parcel that was platted as Lot 1, Block 3 of that first edition. John and Jody Gensel purchased that property soon after from the previous landowner. So that development, the original development, created essentially three, well, four with the existing farmstead here, but created two new lots for residential here with the road extension of K Drive. And then this road extension, the future street, that's indicated on the north side of their parcel, that road corridor was rough graded as part of the project, graded but not paved. The paving was anticipated with the second addition, if and when this property would further subdivide, which is now what we have before us tonight. As you can see, the property is half agricultural and half sparsely wooded land. The applicants are now proposing tonight, and sorry, this will get a little messy with all the topography, but they are proposing to split it into four lots of each just over 2.5 acres. So we have Lot 1 here on the east, Lot 2, Lot 3 and 4, Lot 3 is generally right here, and Lot 4. So the applicants have been working with the same project surveyor and engineer that did the original Rice Lake Estates development. So a lot of the information was kept from that proposal and has been used in their application here tonight. For these developments, what the county requires is that they prove that each lot is two and a half acres, one acre non-hidric soil for septic sites, and then each lot has to identify a 5,000-square-foot building pad and then a primary and alternate septic site, which, which they are showing here. As far as the septic work goes, seven of the eight sites are pretty much approved. One of the, one of the sites is a little off contour, so working with our Environmental Services staff and the septic designer, they'll need to just adjust that. But in talking to Environmental Services today, they don't have any concerns with that shifting of the last. The applicants will be required then to, to pave this future street, and it will end in a T turnaround. So they have met with Newmarket Township and their engineer on two occasions to talk about the, the road and the paving of that road. It will be, again, built to a township standard, so they, they've had their engineer design that road to that township standard. The applicants will be going to the township at their meeting again in July. The township attorney has or is working on a development agreement to encapsulate the, the proposed improvement to the road, that it will be built to township standard. And in talking to the township attorney and the township engineer last week, they really don't have any concerns with what the applicants are proposing. One thing I just want to point out, we sometimes talk about wetlands here. So on the original plat, there were two wetland areas identified, so this was again a 10-acre parcel. These were generally in this area right here, so the larger wetland was right here, the smaller one was right here. With the road being rough graded, and it changed the hydrology, and what happened is the northern or the smaller pocket wetland actually dried up, and the hydrology changed to where the southern wetland actually got bigger. So one wetland was eliminated, the other one was made bigger. So this is just an exhibit that shows what we will be doing is vacating the dedicated easements on the north wetland, and then we're going to be adding in this new area on the southern one. So that'll be done as this project moves forward to the county board. So as I indicated, Environmental Services has essentially approved all the septic sites but one, but that just needs to be adjusted to go on contour. Scott County Natural Resources has reviewed the stormwater management and is approving everything, subject to submittal of a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is typically done at time of construction. Will be vacating the existing wetland easements and expanding the other one. And then the applicants will be going to the township meeting in July, where we anticipate they will be executing the development agreement and approving the plat. So we don't have the township recommendation tonight, but, but that will be coming in July when they execute the development agreement. The applicants are here, and they or I would stand for any questions, but staff is recommending approval of the request. Oh, I do need to point out one thing. As far as hearing, there we go, public comment. Since this was received as public comment, I did want to, this was forwarded to the Commissioners on Friday. An email was received from the property owner to the north, who owns the original Rice Lake Farmstead and the outlots, which are to the north of this property, outlots A, B, and C. There was a restrictive covenant that the developer property owner of the original Rice Lake Estates put on all the property. And so this email came in to the county board last Thursday and was sent to staff on Friday. The county is aware of the covenant, which does have a stipulation that this property shall be limited to no more than three lots. However, that, that is in a private covenant. And the county attorney reviewed this matter back in April, and the township attorney has reviewed this matter as well. Private covenants are not enforceable by any government entity. So on the advice of the county attorney's office, this commission and the county board are to act based solely on the county zoning and subdivision ordinances. Otherwise, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Are there questions from the board at this point, for Mr. Wagner or the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Greg.
Commissioner Huber.
I don't know if it's standard practice, but at the end of this road, we should put a sign-up. I see in a lot of other parts of Scott County, this road will be extended, so people understand that everyone's going to continue on. Is that standard practice for us or not?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, I believe some townships have elected to do that, and we can certainly, as a follow-up to this meeting, we can certainly recommend that to the township.
Encourage them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner. May be further questions. At this point, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on this application, please come up to the podium. There's a sign-up sheet on the podium, and please start any of your comments with your
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Konstantin Kantolakis. I am the owner of the property that is directly to the north of J.J.G. Developments, Rice Lake Estates. And I'm here tonight to say a few words, a little bit about the background of this area here. I came to love this area because this is a sensitive area, a natural corridor that filters down to the Vermillion watershed, as a, an area that has upstream implications that go down to the Vermillion. I'm a trout fisherman myself. I've found that they're in a constant battle to maintain some presence of historical habitat in trout. And the opportunity came to buy this farm and make an impact in a county that I've watched change significantly over the last 30 years. I'm 50 years old. I've, I've hunted in the area, I've enjoyed the nature. And I'm an ag major, environmental sciences. So I took it upon myself that one day I would own a farm that could make a significant change, not just for the environment, but also for the local population. So with my background, I've set forth preserving the agricultural buildings that are on the property, and building a new residence there that can house my family, and I can consider a home for indefinite future, and my children's children. Immediately, I got to work, taking the land out of intensive agriculture. Oh, by the way, how much time do I have? I won't speak too long, but I just want to make sure I'm not cut off.
Well, you want to keep your comments directed to the application.
Okay, all right. So being that this area is in a natural areas corridor as identified, at least part of my farm is, going to the Vermillion, I went about also busting up tile drains that rush water into that stream that go into the Vermillion. So in two regards, A, I'm for the preservation of agricultural character and farmland, and the potential to serve the local community, and people immediately close by and make an impact for those that live nearby, not only for what they purchase, but what they see. So busting up those tile drains has also slowed the water and allowed the infiltration into the ground aquifers, which is important, because I know a lot of things are going on that, you know, as far as development, whether it's Niagara or whatever, we're going to be impacting the, how much water we're going to be drawing out from these aquifers. But with climate change and everything going on, I feel like it was my duty to do my small part. So moving on, I would like to say, I was surprised first that I did not receive a notification about this happening here tonight as a public hearing. Being that I probably have more franchise than anybody on this, I would like to know, unless it was a mistake, I think I should have been notified, number one. Number two, I would like to know how exactly is it that Environmental Services kept up with the proposal? A proposal which I know was established when the original development agreement was done, with clear language that I have right here, that states that cannot be more than three outlots. I'm not against the Gunsels building their three lots. They have every right to do so, and they understood that. But now we're being proposed with four. So I understand that maybe the county can't enforce, you know, private matters that are laid out in covenants, but that's not a fight that's going to be left alone with regards to four lots being created on that parcel. I'd like to know also whether the wetland delineation was done on that north pond that was spelled out earlier, because whether or not, you know, that grading was done and that road building was done, you know, there was, the ponds were altered there, and I just, that is a question I'd like to ask. Is Greg here? Greg, do you know, was there a wetland?
You can tell me the questions. We'll have Greg come up here and respond to them all. Thank you.
Yeah, so the wetland delineation, if that was performed on that property. And then I'd like to know if the county or the township has entertained the possibility that the landowners could simply build on that beautiful parcel that has wetlands and rolling hills and 200-year-old oaks, if they've entertained the possibility that they could simply build their dream home there? Because I'm not one of those guys that wants to prevent anyone from doing their dream, but when it impacts the landscape, and it's different than what I was anticipating seeing happening in an area that everybody in the neighborhood treasures and values and, and loves the way it is, it's, it's a worthy question. So I would obviously, you know, have my main questions of who, who was contacted, how was the list determined, if I was on that mailing list, wetland delineation, and I think, I think that's it. I'm, I'm only here because out of passion for the environment, farmsteads, and a way of living, and a presence there that still says Scott County still believes in a, in a 2030, even in the 2030 MUSA plan, where we were, we, we paid the University of Minnesota here in this county to do a study and tell us, what is it? How do we preserve the rural character of the land? And unless we decide to start doing that, I fear that everything will change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Wagner, could I have you come up here and address those four issues that were identified here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so as far as the notification, we can verify that. So we use our county GIS system, which is tied to the tax parcels, and we do a half-mile radius, which certainly Mr. Kantolakis would, he, he owns four of the parcels to the north, so he would have been, his name would have come up four times, and we can, we have the list that we send to. I don't know that we have it available right now, but we will certainly double-check. But as far as the wetland delineation, so yes, when the original Rice Lake Estates was done in 2008, there was a wetland delineation. Those are valid for three years. So when this application came back, this past year, actually, I think they started site work last year, that was one of the first things they would have had to do, was a wetland delineation. Under the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act, townships are the responsible local government unit for enforcing the Wetland Conservation Act. Newmarket, as most of our townships do, they contract and work with the Scott Soil and Water Conservation District Office for that wetland review. So when that delineation is done, it's submitted to the Scott Soil and Water, SWCD, and then there's an application under WACA, the Wetland Conservation Act, for that to be reviewed. That goes out for a mandatory 60-day review period to various water agencies, Border Water, Soil Resources, DNR, so anybody that has their hands, Vermillion River watershed, anybody that has water regulatory is notified of that 60-day review on the wetland delineation. And then once that 60-day review period is up, then there's a, what's called a technical evaluation panel, and they go out and do a field meeting to verify what was done as far as the delineation. So all the water folks would have gone out to the site to field verify that delineation report, and then they essentially tell the township and the county whether they concur, which they did. And so if, I can certainly get, get him the contact information for the Soil and Water Office and the people who did that review, if he has more questions directly for them, because they would be better able to answer those than, than I would. But yeah, that has been done.
Okay. And the number of lots, a question about the number of lots there. What is the ordinance?
Yep. So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, so there was a change, so every 10 years, as most of the commission knows, the county goes through a process with our comprehensive plan. So this was an area that back in 2009, shortly after the original development was approved, that this northeastern area of Newmarket Township was one of the areas that was looked at to allow two and a half acre development. I think as was noted in the staff report, historically, you have the Walnut Ridge Development and a couple others here to the south, and if you look to the north, you can see also historic development probably from the 70s, 80s. So that two and a half acre development historically has had a presence in this part of the township. That went away in 2000 for a few years, and then there was a review done with the comp plan 13, 14 years ago, and it was just determined to bring it back. And it really, development only happens as the landowner chooses to develop their property. So I think the Gunsels have owned this property for many years, and now have decided to move forward with their application, which they are allowed to do under our ordinances.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarification of that.
Mr. Chair, Greg, as far as, well, as we all know, that two and a half acres is incredible, northern part of Newmarket and also eastern part northern part of Newmarket and also eastern part of Spring Lake, we approved that, like you said, back in two thousand and nine. Also, I wanted to address drainage. Drainage, I think in our ordinance requires that drainage be at pre-settlement levels. I assume that was, happens on this property.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Huber, yes, so as I stated earlier, the engineer who did the original Rice Lake Estates, which mainly included this road and these couple houses here and then rough grading this in, it's the same engineer that the applicants are using now. So the information that they did back in two thousand eight essentially took into account that this road would be here and there would be the potential then for four lots. So all that engineering was kind of pre-done fifteen years ago. And so essentially, when this application came in, our engineer just had to look and verify that they're meeting the same stormwater numbers that they needed to under ordinance. And the county has an agreement with the Vermillion River, we're actually part of the Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization, so we have a presence on that board with the Vermillion River. So that is all kind of reviewed under that Chapter Six stormwater stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wagner?
Not for Greg, but the applicant.
I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant, maybe.
Oh, sure.
If possible.
Commissioner. The applicant.
Yep.
Could you step up here? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I meant the landowner to the north.
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, applicant.
Well, thank you for coming up.
I'm sorry. But not with. It's a couple of simple questions.
Thank you for coming back up.
I think you had a chance in between, but how long did you own your property? I didn't quite catch that, or that you lived on that farm?
Yes, we purchased the property in August of two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Yeah.
And this development was kind of there already or?
I was aware of the ghost plating. It was.
The ghost plating, yeah.
It was sold as such that, you know, this has the potential to be an eighteen parcel or, you know, subdivided into eighteen lots. And knowing that, I knew that either, either I took this opportunity to keep the farm as a functioning farm and eventually get to the point where I have my animals and everything like that to grow vegetables, which I already am doing, but land and conservation.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
But that drain tile then you crushed, was that on your property then?
The drain tile?
Yeah, that you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this application? Anyone else like to come up, make comment on this? Thank you very much. At this point, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Henshaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins, all in favor, vote aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. This time, this time I'll entertain a motion for action or discussion on this item.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning of ten-point-seven-four acres from RR1 to Rural Residential Reserve District to RR2 Rural Residential Single Family District. And the preliminary and final plat of Rice Lake Estates, second addition, consisted of four lots on ten-point-four-seven acres, knowing that this recommendation is subject to conditions listed that must be satisfactory, addressed to the, prior to the county board consideration, and knowing that the town board is going to recommend something in July.
Okay, I have a, more so by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins, any discussion before I call for a vote on this item?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I just note that there are certain conditions on this that have to be met before this, the county board will pass it. So we can pass it tonight, but then there are some conditions that have to be met.
Sure.
I just want that on the record.
Absolutely. All in favor of the motion before us? Vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much for coming this evening for your input. Our next item is two thousand twenty-three dash zero twenty-three, request for conditional use permit to establish an electrical substation Dakota Electric Association, applicant and Swirix Properties LLC, property owner in Section twenty-five of Newmarket Township. And we leave, Mr. Hall is going to be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property, I'll be a little more brief, maybe, Mr. Chair, and then also give the applicant some opportunity to address some of the revisions that were made. The property is located in Section twenty-five of Newmarket Township. And it is at the intersection of Dupont Avenue and Deuce Road, which is.
Excuse me, can you speak a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins. The subject property, it is located in Newmarket Township at the intersection of Deuce Road and Dupont Avenue. And this request was before this board a month ago on May eighth. Three members of the public expressed concerns to the members of this commission about the proposed substation. Public hearing was opened and then closed. Six members of the commission supported a motion to table the request until a future date so that information could be provided about the proposed location versus the industrial park location and information on noise and some of the other impacts could be addressed and by the applicant. And part of that was, there was a, I'll note some of the different review items that have gone through another review. And one of those is the Highway Department review. Now, there was, there is a plan for realignment of Dupont Avenue through the site to meet up with a future road south of County Highway Two. And at February Development Review Team meeting, it included the applicant and the city, it was noted that there was this planned roadway through the site. And county highway staff developed a conceptual alignment for that intersection. And the applicant has since revised their plans to more closely reflect that design that was presented by the Highway Department. And after expressing concerns with that earlier design, the Scott County Highway Department has reviewed the new plans that we see here on this site plan. This is where the future alignment could be made through the site. The Highway Department has reviewed these plans and has noted the current configuration is acceptable. The city of Elko Newmarket also reviewed these plans and note they have no further comments regarding this request. Now, to accommodate the future road alignment, the stormwater and civil plans required substantial revisions. The Natural Resources Department has reviewed those recent changes and provided a memo that was provided to Commissioners at the beginning of this meeting, it was dated six-six just this last week. And the county's engineer has noted three different items to be addressed. And those items would need to be addressed prior to county board consideration of this, of this request. The Newmarket Town Board made a recommendation at their May second meeting recommending approval of the request with three conditions. One of those included a condition that there be a berm as part of the landscape plan to elevate the plantings to better screen the property. The applicant has noted that with the revisions to the stormwater plans and the grading plan that that was not feasible. And so they went back before the township board. And the Newmarket Town Board did amend their recommendation, striking the condition that a berm be installed, meeting just last week on June sixth. And Scott County staff is recommending approval of, of the request based on the eight criteria that are listed in the staff report and the items that need to be addressed prior to county board consideration. Then, Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant to address, to make comments on the different things that were addressed.
That would be fine.
Put it on here and ask for ultimate, our document. Oh, yep, yep. Your, the site selection document. Site selection document. Right, yeah, perfect.
So, before you start your comments, just so people here understand that, we continued this public hearing with specific reasons, to answer specific questions, and I assume that you're going to address those this time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the planning commission did close the public hearing, but you tabled any action until you received additional information. The public hearing was closed, but it was tabled for any action until you received additional information.
Perfect, thank you very much for clarification on that item.
All right, so yeah, the last time I was here, the question was raised as to how we came to select the site that we've chosen. I won't go too much over the general, needing to be close to our general location of need, kind of how we got to the area. However, I would love to comment on the specifics between the two parcels that we ultimately were choosing between or looking at. So first of all, like I said, you know, we do have to site within a certain corridor of an area, we need to be near existing transmission infrastructure, we'd like to be near our existing distribution infrastructure, and then we also have to have the substation located within its proximity to the general need. And based on the comprehensive planning and other development in the area, we knew that there would be a need for a substation east of Elko Newmarket, east of the freeway in the Deuce Road area. So when the plans for the industrial park, of the Park I-35 Industrial Park, kind of became actualized, we actually did first entertain sites within industrial park. This map that was provided actually came out of one of our meetings with the developer there. We proposed five locations that we could potentially site a substation. And the only site that they were willing to negotiate with us on is the southwesterly site shown in green. So we did make a solid attempt to try to cite that in several different places throughout the industrial park. When we started looking at the construction costs and the feasibility of that site, it was determined that the excess cost to get our facilities out of the substation and back to our existing infrastructure would cause significant increases in cost. And that's when we decided to start looking outside of the industrial park. And we ultimately found the property across, basically across the street was available and we had a willing seller there, and so we began negotiations with that property owner. In addition, when we started looking at beyond just the dollars and cents of the property, the Deuce Road, or excuse me, the northeast parcel gives us additional abilities in the future to respond to different needs. If there ever were a need to expand the substation, that property has additional land, excuse me, if we ever had to do any expansion. The property within the industrial park would be basically exactly the size we would need to potentially build on today, and it would give us no ability to respond to any future needs. Excuse me. Secondly, in that southwest property, as I'm referring to the property.
Can you go back to the map, please?
Sure, yes.
So we, thank you.
So that southwest property, there was also a good amount of wetland that they were going to require that we purchase along with it. And that was land that would either have to be remediated or would be unusable land that there'd be nothing we could do with. And since we've kind of reopened this conversation in the last month and taken another look at this, it was actually determined that that site, like I said, the green site there, the actual substation would have to be sited further west, which would eat into that wetland area. So that would require additional remediation of that existing wetland. The reason for that was that it's actually too close to the transmission facilities and we need space to physically install the TAP infrastructure to come off the overhead transmission and get into the substation. There's a, you need to be set back a little ways from it. And where we actually showed it on this map was actually a little too close. And so we'd have to move that further back. Let's see, in addition, access was another concern we had, being located a mile off, or excuse me, a half mile off of the county road, in times of emergency or, you know, emergency response specifically, minutes, moments count. And so being a half mile down that access road with, we don't know what types of traffic or obstructions may occur, that could become an issue in the, in the future. So having access directly off the county road was advantageous to us as well. And again, going back to actually the dollars and cents, our infrastructure coming out of the site today, like I said, there are significant additional costs to get to the same point that we would have at the northeast site. But then we also have to consider any additional infrastructure in the future. So if five, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road, additional circuitry needs to be installed, that has to travel an extra half mile as well, and that comes at a pretty significant So if there are any other questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Robbins. Let's just go back for a minute. I want to go back to the last meeting where we left this, with this map. You had proposed something, the residents came out and said, why can't you do it? Move it in there. I'm assuming now that from what I've heard, you tried that and it was too costly, is that right?
Yes, and I should actually go back, so.
And point it out in the map when you're doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So we know. I mean, remember now, our mindset is back at that meeting, so you've got new information for us now, we want to be clear on that.
Absolutely. So the negotiation on these five sites happened before I was in this role, so that's why at the last meeting, I maybe didn't have the most exact information for you as to what happened prior to me coming into this role. But yes, like I said, this, this negotiation happened last summer or last fall, I forget exactly when that happened, but prior to me being involved. And yeah, we did attempt, like I said, our first initial attempt was to site within, in the industrial park. Our hope was to be on the north side.
And now, when you say that, what do you mean?
I'm sorry.
Point out where you were.
Right, we were hoping to be in one of these more northerly sites.
Okay.
And the developer was not willing to work with us on those. And so ultimately, this green site was the only one they were willing to.
And remind me who the developers again, just for the record?
Ryan Companies.
Thank you. So the one that, that you, after the last meeting, you went to Ryan and everything, and the one that you could do in terms of cost and everything is this green one, is that right?
That, that discussion happened prior to last meeting. So prior to the last meeting, we'd already had this discussion with Ryan, looking at these sites. We couldn't come to a good agreement with them, and so we had abandoned the plan of going within the industrial park. And then that's when we had looked across the road and developed our plans up there and came to the board here.
All right, thank you.
And I should add, since that last meeting, we have kind of internally relooked at all of our plans to satisfy the question as to why we got to the decision to apply for.
Can you point out, now you say it's across the street, where, we just.
It would be, so when they were showing, let's see, where's that other map? On this map here, we looked at a few moments ago that Nathan showed with this road realignment through here, this entrance to the future Dupont Avenue would line up with this entrance here.
All right, so the site that you're going to do is where you're pointing right up there?
Correct, yep, this kind of triangle.
Top right hand, right?
Exactly, correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Henshaw.
Commissioner Robbins, also, if you look at that chart, it was a lot, it looks like it was a lot more consideration than just cost, that they looked at a bunch of other factors.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, you know, I was pretty hard on you and asked you for that information and you were very, very honest. And this is answering some of those questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, Commissioner-
Mr. Chairman.
Watson.
With regard to the nuisance mitigation, can you advise of the thirty-two other distribution subsystems you've got in operation, how many complaints or concerns have you received on those?
As far as nuisances, that I know of, none.
Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Sein.
Last time we had discussed about the concerns of the neighbors. And that, that was my concern also because of the electromagnetic waves generation at the power substation had some standard, they, they are health hazards for Medina. And in that, in that respect, they have some standards of separating that station, the EM generation facility, from the human contact, from the property line. And here you have mentioned in the map, if you go back to Exhibit B.
I believe that was, that this one?
This one. I, I think that, I just want a clarification from you. And that is the number hundred thirty feet and hundred thirty-three feet and nine inches. That is, that is the property, the suppression from the property line of that substation that is there.
Correct, so the, I'll show you with the, I'm getting better with the mouse here. The, the north, uh, excuse me, this, this picture here that I'm pointing out, so the south side of that hundred and thirty-foot measurement would be the northerly most point of our facilities on the site. And that would be a hundred and thirty feet south of the property line.
Yeah, so because you have not given the strength of this substation, how many KV's would be there, I have this standard here that the suppression of a hundred feet is for fifty to hundred and thirty KV lines.
Correct.
Hundred fifty feet is two twenty to two thirty KV lines.
Okay.
And three hundred and fifty feet for five hundred to five hundred and fifty KV lines.
The, so, I'm sorry, hang on.
That, that's why I'm confused, and I want a clarification from you to come about the strength of the substation that you will be-
So the high side, what we call the high side, meaning the, the input of this transmission is a hundred and fifteen KV.
A hundred and fifteen KV?
One hundred and fifteen, yes.
Okay.
And then the output side is seventy, seven thousand two hundred volts.
There was information that we provided, and maybe you could describe that, talk about that in this report, noise at the property line and from the station, which was a concern, and another thing was EMF also, and the generation of EMF. And then from the station.
In regards to noise, and that's what actually this document, this exhibit is showing, kind of the footages. And so as far as that goes, what I did is I got to learn about how sound dissipates over space. And using the inverse square law, using math, and I'm not going to go through all that because it's pretty complicated. But using that math, you can figure out if you know a known reference sound level at a certain distance, you can calculate what that sound should be at a, at a secondary distance. We actually have the exact units that we're going to be installing, or we're planning to install in this substation. We, we had the exact units tested for their sound output. They are guaranteed to run at below seventy-three, listed here, seventy-three decibels. And that would be at its absolute highest output. So think on a very hot summer day, everyone's air conditioner is running, and that substation is loaded down as much as it possibly could. It's guaranteed to run at under seventy-three decibels. Excuse me. We had a number of tests done at different loading levels and different distances away from the unit. And so I calculated based on its absolute maximum guaranteed level. It actually tested at even lower than its guaranteed level, but I wanted to, you know, be as generous as possible on that calculation. So I ran that calculation at seventy-three decibels from, and then that's where I came up with Exhibit B here. At a hundred and thirty feet, that calculation came to approximately forty-five to forty-six decibels at the property line. Currently in this area, the ambient sound is already at about forty-five to forty-six decibels. So at the property line, any sound, even at its highest use, should be essentially zero. And then when you add on any additional footage, also, like I said, that does not include any consideration to elevation or anything blocking, physically blocking, any vegetation, anything like that. My calculation is, I mean, that would be in a soundproof environment at those footages. Is there any other?
EMF?
Piss that question. Yeah, EMF. So we provided, I believe that's in here. This actually comes from our transmission partner, Great River Energy. So they have some documentation here about EMF. When you look, and I think actually Commissioner Hussein, this is what you're maybe referring to, or one of the things you're referring to, EMF from a transmission line. It drops off dramatically as you get away from the line. And so at a hundred feet, there's essentially no, there's no detectable radiation or EMF at a hundred feet from any sort of transmission line.
Excuse me, why don't you tell us what EMF is? I know, we all know, but just for the audience.
Sure, so EMF is the magnetic field that is, radiates off of anything energized.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time for, on the report? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the commission continued this to, for consideration to get additional information. Are there any other questions that commissioners have or discussion before they're ready to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chair. I went out and looked at these today. Went out and stood, walked around them. And I could not discern any, any noise coming from them. As, as you said, the ambient noise out there, the wind, and some of the traffic I heard, but the houses around me heard that too. And I was trying to see if there was something that, that was bothersome, and I couldn't see it. Now, I don't know if, I assumed that they were kind of operating because these are substations that are up and, and running. And I just did not hear anything except the ambient noise. I want to emphasize that. Went to three of them. So that's just for discussion purposes, Mr. Chair.
I think other commissioners also have visited other code electric stations. I know that they have forty-two stations, but they said that there are stations in residential areas, and an opportunity to see them and see the proximity to houses and, and an opportunity to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
I had the opportunity to visit a Great River substation similar to what David has talked about. And it's, houses are, homes are built within probably a hundred and fifty feet of the fence line of the substation. And I'm going to hear you, hang on.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit based on the eight criteria that are listed in the report. And I think this goes to the Board of Commissioners, doesn't it, Mr. Chair? So that'd be my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, back to Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of things I want to say. I really appreciate all the work that's been done here, and I appreciate, by the way, the residents coming to us last meeting, talking about their concerns. That's the way government's supposed to work, so I, I'm glad that you, that you came here and, and talked to us. You know, this is the way government's supposed to work. Something happens. There are difficulties, there are problems. We go back. And we work hard at that to see if we can alleviate or answer the questions that, that were bothering us. And I think they have them answered, and as you heard tonight, some of us have gone out to some of those substations and actually stood there. It's not just a rhetorical exercise that we've been out to those things. And so I'm satisfied and will support this today, made the motion. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a township recommendation form. I think it deals primarily with landscaping. That'd be part of the motion as well.
The berm?
Yes.
They backed away from that.
They backed away from that, okay.
That's been modified. Okay, any other comments Commissioner Sein?
I just want to make a comment about the EM electromagnetic waves that we are, we are talking about. That has, that is an established health hazard. And there are standards in the industry that to separate that out, they are, EM are generated from the electrical pulses that are there. And they are a health hazard. So because this station is near the, people who live near the residences, my biggest concern was about not affecting the health of the neighbors. And that criteria is met, I believe. I looked into the internet and got the standards that are there. And I'm satisfied with that it will not have any health effect on the neighbors. So I am satisfied, and I'd like to approve that.
Anything else before I call for a vote?
At this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of this motion before us, vote aye.
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 Mr. Chair, abstain.
I have all six ayes with one abstention. This passes, so the approval for recommendation for the conditional use permit for the code electric, disestablished electric substation has been approved. Thank you very much. Our next item is twenty twenty-three dash zero three-three, a request for a conditional use permit to operate a microbrewery, taproom, and private event space, Union Trail LLC, applicant and property owner in Section Eight of Blakely Township. And Mr. Wagner will be making our staff report.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Commissioners, on the screen is the location map of property in Section Eight of Blakely Township. So this is in the hamlet of Blakely, which is to the southwest of Belle Plaine on our western border of Scott County. So the subject property is located off of County Road One on the southern part of the hamlet. This is an aerial photo from April of twenty twenty-two of the, the building. The request before you tonight is for a microbrewery or in a brew hall. So the building is a fourteen thousand square foot building that was previously used for many purposes. Originally was constructed as an agricultural lab many years ago. Once that lab shut down, it was used for some other business uses. But most recently, it was purchased and used as another brewery from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-two. So, so the site has some, has been, was used for, for a brewery for the last eight years. With our comp plan updates the last couple of times around, the idea of hamlets has come up in promoting mixed-use, small-scale businesses in those areas. And so when we last did our comprehensive plan update in twenty nineteen, we created the Hamlet Mixed-Use Overlay District, and then with the zoning ordinance update, we created a new zoning district overlay, the Hamlet Mixed-Use District in twenty twenty. And in that district, there are a list of, I think, eleven uses that would be allowed through a conditional use permit. Brewery is one of those uses. And so the, the previous brewing operation was permitted through an administrative permit, but with the update, we, we now require a conditional use permit. So the brewery portion itself was originally this kind of northern area and part of this front area here. It's hard to see, but there is a little patio. So this was the photo when the previous operation was taken, or taken when the previous brew was operating. And now Union Trail is proposing to move into that space since the other brewery relocated to Mankato. So this is the, kind of the floor plan. It's turned a little bit from the previous photo, but essentially there's a production space within the structure here. And then the front portion is a large taproom area with various tables for different seating. Then the previous operator and then this new operator also will have a patio and outdoor game space the front of the building. Union Trail is proposing to open up and then do some cosmetic changes to the building, more windows, more doors. It still has an industrial feel to the structure, so they're proposing to make some, some changes to kind of liven up the place a little bit. But one of the other things they're asking as part of the CUP request is to expand into another part of the building, which is labeled private event space. So the current brewery is a brewery taproom is forty-six hundred square feet. And then this private event space is thirty-seven hundred square feet. So they would rent that area out to private parties or small events for up to like fifty people. And then the previous operator also did have like food trucks. They are proposing to have an area kind of on the north side. So if I go back to the photo, kind of this area here would be where food trucks would be able to park and locate. Access to the site is off of the paved entrance here off of County Road One. Traffic then does pass by the patio area, but that is pretty well fenced, and, and the applicants will be making, you know, improvements to, for, for safety railings and things like that. But traffic goes and then parks on the south side of the building here. All this construction equipment has been cleaned up since this photo was taken last year. The building, as I indicated, they're expanding, so they're taking away some of those other business uses. And if I go to the next site plan, there we go. So they've designed this for one hundred total spaces. The main parking would be on the south end of the building, likely employee parking on the back, adding some handicapped accessible parking around the north corner, and then some parking spaces for the patio. Based on the size of the operation, they need about sixty spaces, so they're well exceeding what the county requires for parking on the site. As I said, they're going to do some cosmetic improvements to the building. The parking lot is gravel surface, which it has been for a long time, and, and that functioned well for the last operator as well. For the eight years the other operation was going, we didn't receive any complaints on the operations or noise or anything like that. So there, there's a history with this building being used for this use that has been very good. And so we're anticipating that will continue with, with the new operation. The one unusual thing here is the site is pretty much hard surface all around, so there is no septic for this operation. The previous operator had a pumping agreement with a licensed septic pumper, so with, with what they're doing here, they have to get that pump regularly. When we met with the applicants in the township at the development review team meeting, Environmental Services provided them a list of licensed septic pumpers. So they'll have to get a pumping agreement with a new septic pumper to, and they submit records to the county so we can monitor that they are, are doing those activities.
Before you move on, just a quick question on that.
Yeah.
How do they size the system, you know? You know, if they're going to have more people here, I mean, is it just more frequency in pumping?
More frequent pumping.
Essentially, that's how you handle it?
Yep.
Because pumping is just a holding tank?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So lastly, the township, so we did do a Development Review Team meeting with the township and the applicants back in early May. The township also does sign off on building permits, so the windows, the doors, the cosmetic improvements. One of the things that is going to happen, that has not happened yet, that the township was waiting for, was the county building department was going to do a walkthrough site inspection, and the township wanted to participate in that inspection. So the applicant is actually scheduled on their July meeting, July 11th, to get the township recommendation and signatures on building permits. We're anticipating the walkthrough will happen in the next like two to three weeks ahead of the township meeting. So we do not have the recommendation, but they are scheduled on their July agenda, and we do have a condition that if there are any special requirements from the town board, that those would be addressed prior to county board consideration. So staff is recommending approval. The applicant is here if he would have any questions for him or myself.
Any questions?
Greg, that property to the north, why would they not consider a drain field and septic system? It looks like you got the area there. Is it because of cost or?
No, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Pika, what's not shown on this map is hydroic soil and flood plain, so the river is right here. So a lot of, like, there's the Blakely, the old Blakely Green Facility. So a lot of these areas are low in hydroic soils where they cannot put a septic system. So that's likely the challenges, the soils on the property.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Huber.
I was reading in here that this is part of the planned Blakely Regional Park Boundary, but it's also in the hamlet overlay district, which we understand we did the overlay and tried to control what's happening in the hamlets and things like that. But what's going to happen? I mean, are they going to just take this out of the boundary? Or would that be taken if they sell the property down the line and be part of the park? Because I've seen houses in various parks that I think there's agreements if they sell that the county would buy it. Is that what's going on here?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, so early on, there was communication between the applicants and Scott County Parks. So the applicants are aware that this property and some of the surrounding properties within the hamlet of Blakely are in the future regional park. At this point, the county, so the county is aware of this use. There's no plans imminently to look at purchasing any property. So there have been discussions between the applicant and county parks, but at this point, county parks has no plans to make any offers to purchase anything, so.
Yeah, why don't they just pull it out of there? Make it part of the park?
I think they would have to amend the regional park boundary through the Met Council because we've been dealing with some other properties up County Road 1, and to change that map is, you know, like I just said, it has to go through the Met Council, and it's kind of a undertaking.
Okay.
So we'll just leave it as is and make people aware that they're in the park boundary.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. You wouldn't like to make comment on this application before us. Seeing no one moving towards the podium, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Pika, second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hanches. All in favor, vote aye. This time I'll entertain a motion on the application before us.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval, this is a statute for a recommended conditional use permit for Union Trail LLC to operate a microbrewery, taproom, and private event space.
Second. A motion and a second?
I'll second.
Another second.
That's two seconds.
Two seconds.
Two seconds.
Two seconds. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, our next public hearing is request for a conditional use permit to operate an organics recycling facility and preliminary pad of Melkerson Addition, consisting of two lots and one outlaw, on 221.4 acres, Shakopee-Meadowackton Sioux Community, applicant and property owner in Section 16 of Louisville Township. And I see that Marty Schmidt, Arizona, and Mr. Schmidt will be making his staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What I'm going to do here tonight is I'm going to give you a pretty brief introduction to the plat and organic recycling facility conditional use permit. And then I'm going to turn the presentation over to Steve Albrecht, who is the Director of Land and Natural Resources with SMSC, and he'll dive much deeper into the plat and organic recycling facility project. So the organic recycling facility be located here on Lot 1 on our site location map. The property is in Section 16 and 21 of Louisville Township. It lies just kind of south or west of State Highway 41, kind of south of the Minnesota River here, about a quarter mile to the west of 169 here. This eastern boundary of the property is the Union Pacific Railroad. And the area that's between the river and the plat itself is actually DNR owned property. The property itself is owned I-2, which is our heaviest industrial zoning, yard waste. Composting facilities are along with the conditional use permit as is recycling facility. So this is the proper zoning for this type of use. Now to the aerial photo. For those of you familiar with the site, this property was owned by the Melkerson family prior to being purchased by the SMSC. The Melkerson family operated a boarding stable and horse training facility on this property for years. This was also the site of the Trail of Terror, which was a Halloween event that occurred a couple of weeks prior to Halloween on each year occurred on this property as well. There is an access road that comes off of State Highway 41 here, kind of parallels the railroad all the way to the southern edge of the property. This is actually the north entrance to the Minnesota Renaissance Festival. They leased land from the Melkerson family here to the south. The Renaissance Festival grounds are now on Brian Rock owned property. Brian Rock has a quarry down in that area as well. I think it's important to point out that the applicant, the SMSC, they did a discretionary or voluntary EAW on this facility. They did that through the MPCA. Took a great deal of study and work to get that EAW to the finish line. At the conclusion, the MPCA determined the organic recycling facility posed no significant environmental risks and no additional environmental work was needed. Louisville Township did hear the conditional use permit and plat request at their meeting last Thursday night. They did recommend approval of the request. Subject to, number one, the items in their engineer's memo be addressed prior to county board action. And number two, there was a list of updated conditions that was in your folder here tonight. There's 22 conditions. This conditions document was set, the base for it was essentially the conditions that were in the planning report, but it was added to and strengthened by township staff and township attorney. Those conditions have been reviewed by county staff and the applicants, and everybody is comfortable with those conditions. So those 22 conditions are the conditions that we're moving forward with here. Also, in your folder, you received a final plat document. At the time the planning report came out, that document wasn't available. So because this request includes the final plat of Melkerson Addition, we included it in your folder. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Steve Albrecht. Once he has completed, he and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Marty. Chair Commissioners, my name is Steve Albrecht. I'm the Tribal Operations Administrator, involved with land and natural resources also for the Shakopee-Meadowackton Sioux Community. Tonight, I have our Assistant Bio Processing Manager from our existing organics facility, Dustin Monty, in the audience. And then I've also got Dan Lannister, Project Manager and Engineer for the project in the audience too, if we get questions that are beyond my area of expertise. What I'd like to do is give you just a brief presentation, give you a high-level look at the facility, the site, why this site, public involvement permitting that we've gone through, so that when I'm done, hopefully you'll know that a lot of eyes have looked at this project, and it's been scrutinized for nearly four years. And so I'll take you through that now. Just to let you know, our existing facility, any of you who have visited our existing facility, it's located just east of County Road 83 in, on Shakopee reservation land, but it's within the city of Shakopee. The existing site is about 30 acres, 30, 35 acres. We have about 25 acres of paved surface. It exists within about a 600 acre prairie area. If you're familiar with that area, one of the issues in that area is we have housing coming on all sides that is closing in on the site. And so expanding at the existing site and upgrading the technology doesn't make a lot of sense in that location. The existing facility takes in materials, yard waste, food waste, other organic materials, and basically takes those materials, we process those, and we turn them into compost, soil mixes, and mulches for total reuse. So basically, total reuse of the materials that come into that facility. The current facility takes in about 70,000 tons of organic material up to per year. The majority of that material is yard waste, leaves, grass clippings, woody waste. We take in 10,000 to 12,000 tons of food waste at that facility also as part of that process. And as I said, that facility is pretty much maxed out. What we're going to talk about in a few minutes, the technology and the things that we are looking at at this facility make it very different than our existing facility. And there's many reasons for that. But the new technology, I would equate it to your phone that hung on the wall versus your iPhone. That's in the world of composting, kind of what we're talking about here. We are basically using a facility in Shakopee that Mother Nature, we have to work with what Mother Nature provides us. It's a very labor-intensive facility, but we don't have the ability to control temperatures, airflow, the things that moderate odor or to filter odors or anything of that nature. Whereas our new facility, I'll touch on all the things that that facility will have. While it may not look like much in the world of composting, it's very advanced for a compost facility. The other thing that's important is the Metropolitan Region has a goal by 2030 to recycle and divert 75% of our waste. It's important in the Twin Cities because we can, we do not have unlimited landfill space in the Twin Cities. And so when we can divert and reuse waste, that's obviously a priority. This facility is part of that bigger priority system. Talking about the existing site Marty touched on, the organics facility will take up kind of the middle section of that site. It's about 93 acres when it's at full construction. Just to talk about the plat for a second also, but before I do that, you'll note the uses that are around this site. So immediately to the east of the site, we have the Demcon landfill. Just kind of the southeast, we've got the closed Louisville landfill. We've got Brian Rock products. To the north, we've got the asphalt plant. This is area zoned, heavy industrial. It is the suitable zoning for this. We were very deliberate in selecting this site. There are very limited sites in Scott County that support this type of use, and so we wanted to make sure that we cited it in a appropriate location for that. So that was an important part of that. The plat that you were showing earlier had two lots, the lot that the organics facility will be on, and then we did have a lot along 42 or 41 also. The lot along 41, we have not determined a use for that lot yet. It made sense to plat it at this time as a lot, just because we were going through the process of plating that property. You'll see the red outline. The community actually owns 330 total acres in that area. So we own the land south of 41, and then we own 130 acres north of 41 that includes the asphalt plant that is leased out by Martin Marietta from the SMSC. The outlot that's at the southern end of the site, that outlot, there's no plan for development. That outlot right now, the Queen's Lot for Renfest is what's on that outlot currently. There is a septic site for that outlot. We do not have plans for that. It has to do with the access. It doesn't have access to a public roadway at this time either. So that's on a year-to-year agreement with Renfest for use of that property for their Queen's Lot. As I touched on, the site is zoned heavy industrial. Another important thing about this site, the closest residential property, there's a small cluster of manufactured housing that's about 2,000 feet away, but then it's another 1,500 feet away to the next real established housing areas. That's more than double what we have in our current location for distance to housing. So that's important. City of Carver and Chaska are both over a mile away from this site. So significant differences in distance also from our current location. This facility is going to be using what I mentioned was state-of-the-art technology, and I'll talk about that in a second. But what this does is this technology allows us to control the temperatures in the composting process. And why that's important is it allows us to speed up the process, which thereby eliminate or very limits the amount of time that compost can have odors. At the same time, it allows us to do it in a way without disturbing the piles very often. So at our current facility, that process can take 70 to 90 days to go through that process. We have to stir things up about five times during that process. Every time you stir up these long rows, that's when you get odor issues, you get odor concerns. Our new facility, it will get stirred up about two times, but that process is finished in about 20 days. So substantially less. And the reason for that is we have air that's blowing into the piles and then air that can be pulled through the piles. We can keep consistent temperatures, and we also have the ability, if there are any odors detected, to pull air into the piles through a filtration system so that we have negative airflow, so we're not releasing odors out into the atmosphere if there are any issues detected. So much more sophisticated automated system that runs 24 hours a day monitoring the temperatures internally. The other good thing is if you're familiar with aerobic and anaerobic bacteria, aerobic bacteria that use air, they generate a lot less odors than your anaerobic bacterias. And so we're able to use the less stinky bacteria to do the work that we need done in the composting process. So all of these things lead to you having much better control and substantial reduction in any potential of odors versus the current facility. And then the other part of why we believe this is a really successful site is we have the longest-tenured composting staff in the state with, from expertise of operating a large facility. There's only two large-scale facilities in the state of Minnesota of this magnitude. One is over in the Farmington area, and then we have the SMSC's facility. We believe our staff has learned over the last 12 years or so of operating the facility and worked across the United States training on how to operate these facilities. So we feel very comfortable, both with our location, that that's appropriate, the technology that we have, and with the people that we have, that this is going to be a successful project in this location. Some other points, we are also working with MNDOT. We have a cooperative agreement that we're developed with MNDOT, and we're working with Union Pacific Railroad to create some, or to improve that intersection. If you're familiar with that intersection, if you've ever been to Renfest, there's no turn lanes at that intersection. There's no bypass lanes at that intersection. That will all be taken care of as part of this project, and I'll touch on that in a second. The new facility can process up to 172,500 tons of material, so about two and a half times what our existing facility can do. About 40,000 tons of that will be food waste in that process. We also have an additional, our permit from the MPCA allows us to have an additional 40,000 tons of yard waste on the site, and that's really to allow us to operate year round. In the wintertime, if you, in the wintertime, we don't get as much yard waste in for obvious reasons, and so we have to make it through those wintertime processes and have enough yard waste on hand. Food waste is consistently coming in, but yard waste is not. So we have to be able to stockpile yard waste, which is why it allows us to do that.
What's SSO?
So that's Source Separated Organics. That's the food waste component. So that's food scraps from a pickle factory, the reject cucumbers, or it's just food waste for curbside, which you're starting to see. So that's what that SSO is, stands for. Big reason for these facilities, obviously, public health is a primary piece of this. This type of facility compared to our other compost facility has a, even though that facility helps reduce greenhouse gases, this one substantially reduces those gases because of the processes we use. Food waste and waste that's put into landfills emits a lot of greenhouse gases as it decomposes. This facility, because of how it operates and recycles the material, we're looking at full buildout, about 21,000 tons of carbon reduction per year when this facility is completed, which is a substantial amount of the SMSC's carbon footprint alone, so. This is a schematic of our site. Our site is, again, very simple. I'll see if I can use this to kind of take you into the site here. So coming off of the existing roadway, vehicles will come in down below. They will go into a building and they will tip inside our current facility. We don't tip inside, it's actually tipped outside. Gives us a little bit better control of things and the environment. We also do have contingencies in place to, if there are any, we don't believe there's going to be an odor issue of tipping, but we've looked into a fogging system that's portable, that can be used throughout the site, and they're used throughout the United States. States. If there is an odor or you have a spot that you're having an issue with, you actually can use these fogging systems, completely safe, biodegradable and, but it knocks down and reduces any odors. And so they're used at all the large composting facilities. So that was a question that we got, when you're tipping that material inside, if you do have odors, how are you going to handle that? Well, we would use this fogging system in that internal because you don't have that filtration, positive, negative airflow, it's not in that cell yet when it's tipped off of the trucks. And so that's what we would have available if needed in that location. Once the material is tipped, it's put into bunkers and I'll show you those in a second. These bunkers, it is then capped with, with yard waste, wood chips, and so that gives it a buffer. And then we have, as we said, positive and negative airflow that can pull the air into the piles through a filtration system before that air is released. Once the material sits in those bunkers for about eighteen to twenty days, it's put into curing piles. It's basically completed what we would call its odorous phase, the phase where you're getting a lot of activity and it starts to cool down. We cure the compost to allow it to further break down and it just makes for a better product and material. So when it's used in gardens, in yards, it, it is a much more productive material and so that's why we do that with it. And for the most part, that is the process. Another key piece of this is the stormwater management. One of the unfortunate things that we've seen in this world is the use of, the advent of PFOS. And unfortunately PFOS is something that's inherent with composting because a lot of the containers that food waste comes in have PFOS in them, they use it to help fight grease. So you think about wrappers at McDonald's, those are lined with, were lined with PFOS to keep the grease from soaking through pizza boxes, all of that. So for a long time, a lot of that waste coming in has PFOS in it. What can happen though is when you get stormwater hits that, that compost, that PFOS comes out of the, the compost, goes into the stormwater. So we have to make sure that it doesn't get into the groundwater and the surface waters. Our system is designed to recycle a hundred percent of the onsite water. We operate the site at a deficit. We actually are in, we will be building a miniature wastewater treatment plant essentially. It will be an aeration system plant similar to what you'd see in a rural community where you're collecting this, the, the water. It goes through an aeration system, which allows those good bacteria, again, to break down any waste that's in that water. And then it's recycled and we reuse it throughout the composting process and you evaporate water. And so we don't actually discharge water from the site as part of the process. It's been designed to operate at a negative water deficit so that if we do need water, we do have a well onsite that we can supplement with water, but we've designed it to utilize stormwater first, then potable water if we need it for the facility. So important piece, yes.
What's PFOS, is that the forever chemicals?
Yes, it is. There's, it's a family, it's a general name given to a whole family of chemicals that were created for different reasons, but you're correct, it doesn't go away. And so there's no way to get rid of it in the, especially in the water column and the water stream, so.
Thank you.
This is a look of a site that will be somewhat similar, they've got a tipping building. You can see the bunkers behind the tipping building and then this is actually the filtration system behind it. You've got large blowers that are blowing air through and pulling air back depending on the temperatures. And then these are the curing rows right here. Again, these are different than the rows we have in our current facility. The rows at our current facility, that material is still undergoing that biological process where it can emit odors. In this case, these rows have gone through that process and they're just cooling down and further degrading. Another view of that, you can see one of the bunker floors, you see these slots, there are, those are where the air diffusers are within those slots in the floor of these concrete bunkers. This is just a diagram of that air system and how that works and how it actually takes the air in and out of the system, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we or I personally visit this facility?
So there is one facility like this built in the state of Minnesota that you could visit right now, and that's the Pope Douglas Facility, which was just completed. It's a small facility, but they're using the exact same technology that we will be using. We are actually going to be, I think, setting up a tour for some township staff if anyone's interested in, in attending that. But once our facility is open, obviously, public education and having people come through is going to be a big part of this facility.
Your facility is not ready.
It is not ready, nope. So, so we would, there's one in the state of Minnesota, most of these facilities are on the west coast right now, up the west coast into British Columbia into Canada. That's where the majority of them are, the company that we're getting the technology, but they just finished their first facility using the exact same technology in a much smaller scale here in Minnesota and Pope Douglas. I think it's the Glacial Compost Facility is the name of it. So we can certainly provide information about if anyone's interested in stopping there and help set up a tour so you could see it and experience it. Highway forty-one, so this be north towards the river this way, towards one sixty-nine. Railroad tracks here will actually be widening the railroad crossing as part of this. Union Pacific, MINDOT had already scheduled a project to do repairs of the railroad crossing, so they are doing a joint project with Union Pacific. The SMSC will be paying for the new equipment because the arms at the, at the crossing will have to be longer to allow for the turn lanes. If you're familiar with that, you basically are on the crossing before, when you want to make that left turn into the site if you're headed northbound. So what we're doing is we are moving, slightly moving the intersection a little bit to the north in that we won't have the southernmost roadway coming out will be condensed to the north side, but we will be adding in the turn lanes, bypass lanes for that whole area. And so we think that's going to be a good safety improvement, it's also going to help improve access to our sites. Our traffic generation does not dictate that we have to do this. This is something we want to do because everybody knows if you're going to try to operate a business in that location, just normal day traffic is tough to get in and out of that property. And so it's important to us that our, that are both our, our customers and our employees have safe access, but that we also have access to the property. And so that's why we are completing those improvements. Those, and, and I'll touch on timing of those improvements. I just wanted to go through public outreach here for you. We started this project in December of 2019, meeting with the Louisville Township Board at that time. We've had several meetings with them since then. We have been updating the county, cities of Shakopee and Prior Lake at our quarterly intergovernmental workgroup meetings. We've done a virtual presentation to the mayor of Carver back in 2021. We've done scale presentation in 2022. We've been to the Jackson Township Board. We also did, as we talked about, we did the discretionary EAW, which took nearly two years of process, which was pretty significant for an EAW. We did a voluntary public open house with mailings in a one-mile radius, that's substantially more distance than the typical notification is. We worked with the township to make sure anyone who might be interested in the township got an opportunity to come and ask questions and be part of that meeting. The SMSC view this as property they're going to own forever, and so they want to be good neighbors and good partners to the township and the people that live in the township. City of Chaska, we went and made a staff presentation and then we presented to their city of council earlier this year. And then we also presented that next day to the Carver County Board on this project also, to make sure that all of the neighbors of this project know about the project and are aware and, and know where to go if they have questions or concerns about anything going on. Pretty positive feedback. Actually, Chaska's biggest concerns evolved around just making sure when we do the road impacts, because they've had forty-one closed down for a good portion of this year, they don't want to see further closures, and so they want us to make sure we minimize any closures or road impacts. That was their biggest concern that, that we talked about at the meetings with them. We talked about project permits, just to make sure everybody knows how much this has gone, going through. So we did our discretionary EAW. We have three major permits from the MPC. Our SSO, the Source Separated Organics Permit, which is our solid waste permit with them. We have an air permit with them, which is actually the most, most comprehensive of the three permits. We have an industrial stormwater permit, which is what dictates how we handle PFOS, treat all of that stormwater. And then we will have an MPDS construction permit with them. The DNR, we will have a water appropriations permit, we will put a new well in on the site. Wells in this area are pretty limited, it's not, it's about a six-hundred GPM well, so it's not a significant well, but we will have a DNR water appropriations permit necessary for that. And that will provide us with some fire protection capabilities on the site. One nice thing about the way this process is, we, traditional compost sites, they heat up, the piles heat up, there's no way to keep them cool. With our air system, we're actually able to regulate temperatures, so there really is very minimal concern about any flare-ups of piles or anything, but we will have hydrants and fire protection onsite. And SMSC also has our own fire department ten minutes away, so if we have an issue, we have twenty-four seven monitoring of that. And then we have our MINDOT cooperative agreement and the permitting for the access, where we've done the level one, I believe we're headed to the level two review right now with MINDOT. And we've got the lower Minnesota River Watershed District, we'll have an initial with their board next week actually, on the twenty-first. And then Louisville Township, we just were there the other night, they've been involved with our tree removal, they'll be involved with our development contract and they did the, the project review. And then obviously with the county, we've got several steps that we'll be going through with you. Schedule-wise for this project, we're here tonight before you. If we are to, if we are allowed to move on to the next phase, we would be at the county board potentially a week from now. We are at the lower Minnesota River Watershed District next week. And facility construction would start as early as July if all those approvals were had. We have to get that development contract, still has to go through its process before that can happen also. And then the, the highway forty-one construction would probably be spring through early summer of next year. Most of that construction will be done without impacts to traffic because it's really widening, adding turn and bypass lanes. There will be a period of time when they're working on the rail, railroad tracks that UP and MINDOT will have to do some closures and they'll figure out how that's going to be. I think our push is for them to do that before construction season, that the asphalt plant and other things get really busy in that area, it's going to cause some, some potential impacts. So we're pushing for that. And then potentially this facility would be operational by July of 2024. And that is it. I can take any questions that you have on the facility.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm impressed. I mean, you've done a lot of work here and that stuff. I'm curious, you know, you get all this stuff coming in, you do all this stuff to it, make sure it doesn't smell or anything like that. And when you get done, what do you have left? You have compost.
Yep.
So what is that? Is that dirt and, and waste or what is, what is that exactly?
So yes, we have essentially three main products, products that we sell. So we will have some regular wood mulch, so we sell wood mulch from some of the, the wood waste. But our compost goes through and then from the compost, which is a rich organic material, we, we either sell that as straight compost where people add it to existing soil to build up the organic content in the existing soil, or we pre-mix it with, for example, sand to create rain garden mixes that can be used in rain gardens where it allows plants to grow. So we sell a whole variety of soil mixes that have that compost in them to give different organic contents. And those soil mixes are used everywhere from in someone's vegetable garden, all the way to large reconstruction projects where they actually use those soil mixes on the boulevards and in the shoulders, and then they spray seed those areas. And we find that that is a much better way for restoration than sod because that seed does a better job of establishing itself. And we've got quite a few studies that show how well that, that seed, how quickly it comes up and establishes itself because of the organic content is so high in this material, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just have one add-on question?
Absolutely.
Is your market only in Minnesota or does your market go outside the boundaries in Minnesota?
I think we've actually been doing some work in Iowa recently, so we, we do go outside Minnesota boundaries. Our primary market goal is to be Scott County and outward, that would be our goal right now. The front end, there's, the organics are coming available, that's not the issue, getting the organic material. Selling some of the compost mixes, that's still a growing market as the road projects and those become more popular, our goal would be to be more local with that product and having kind of full cycle here in Scott County. The organics come in and they go back out on our roadways and into our developments and places, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when you bring in a mixture, you got the organics and, and that type of stuff. So where's the sand and peat and black dirt coming from? Is it locally then?
It's all local. We typically will, our existing, our, we bring in sand from local areas, but a lot of times what we will have is, we'll have projects nearby where they're looking to get rid of black dirt and we'll take that extra material, it's a good opportunity to recycle that material and not have to truck it far. So that's typically where if you go to our existing site, you'll see large piles of those materials that have come off of projects, county projects, local projects, where they can haul it just to us to get rid of it instead of hauling it across.
So you don't have a source, you just, it just shows up?
At this site, the, the proposed facility is in a mined-out area. There is sand on the site, but we're not proposing to mine any sand as part of this project. That's not part of our permits, but there is sand in this area, but we're, we're, we would be buying sand or taking it from excess from projects at this point, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have people I know that live by your existing facility and the order at times is an issue with the wind in certain directions. Sounds like you're getting that under control, you're moving it further away from residential, plus you have systems in place that help control the order, so that's good.
That's correct.
I have a question on infiltration, you're holding ponds. You're going to be pretty sandy soils on this site. You're going to, it's going to infiltrate pretty fast. I don't know, you're going to hold the water to use it for recycling unless you line it with something.
Yep, so our entire surface is paved in the areas where we're collecting the stormwater and all the ponds are lined and then the aeration basins are concrete, actually. They're large concrete basins with the aerators in them for the finished stuff. So everything is lined, we're not, we do have, I think, for some runoff up by the shops, we do have an area that's like a rain garden, but that's regular stormwater, it's not any of the, the concrete.
So they're lined so you can hold water for a while, so you can recycle it. Okay, thank you.
Because we need the water on the site, so you are correct.
Is your original facility going to stay in operation or are you going to take it down?
No, the original facility, the twenty-five acres, if you've been out there, we're starting to put fencing up. We are looking to establish bison in that location later this year. And so that's, that's a prairie that's been restored, the goal there is to have the prairie and then have the buildings that are there. The hoop, the large hoop building, we'll actually be bringing to this site for our tipping building, but the rest of the buildings will stay there for our bison facility. We will leave some of our mulch equipment up at that location, but there will be no composting at that facility once this one's up and operational, so.
Right. I noticed as part of your plan, you're going to remove all the existing structures off this site.
Yep, if you've been down there, the, actually, they're all gone except for the ones we're keeping. Yep, so and the reason for that is we had concern, safety concerns, we had individuals showing up in those structures and a lot of them are older and falling down and we wanted to not have a safety issue there. So we had those removed about a month and a half ago, I believe, so, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear and I, I know this, but I, I want you to just acknowledge, this is not, people aren't going to bring wood or tires or anything like this to this.
No, no construction debris, that'll go to Demcon.
That'll go to Demcon, all right. Thank you.
All right.
And no hazardous materials.
And no hazard.
Yes. Very good, a really complete presentation. As you can tell, we do appreciate when it's put together this way and obviously you've been working on this for some time and we appreciate that greatly. Thank you very much for your comments. This is a public hearing. If anyone has comment on this application before us, can come up to the podium at this time, please start with signing in and stating your name.
Mr. Chair, we're questioning whether you formally have opened the public hearing. Did you open it?
Yes, it is open. Public hearing is open.
All right, sorry about that.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to get up and speak tonight. Steve has been at the township meetings making, updating the board on everything going on. I guess my comment tonight, oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl DuSet, clerk for Louisville Township and I'm also a resident, not too far from where this is happening, so I hope everything, if there is odor, it'll go the other direction. I guess my comment tonight is more of a question on the plating process with lot one, two and the other lot. It maybe is a more of a staff question. If they lease to the Renaissance Festival for parking, and we all know there's parking issues with that, if they want to lease to the Renaissance Festival, should there be a condition that they can lease to other, I, I'm just, I don't know if it's a valid question or not, but just so we don't interfere with leasing to the Renaissance for the parking issues that have come up. Do you follow my question?
Okay, we'll have staff address that.
Okay, I, like I said, it's, it's not really the facility, the organic recycling facility itself, it's more maybe a question for the SMSC. If leasing to the Renaissance needs to be listed as a condition for... listed as a condition for?
A permitted part of the?
A permitted.
Yes, I understand what your question is.
Because it's a historic use out there, I mean, Renaissance Festival has utilized this area for parking when the Melkersons owned it for years. And it's just a change of ownership. It's really not changing the use by SMSC leasing to Ren Fest versus Melkerson family. So I don't feel we need to do anything land use wise, land use permit wise for that particular use. If they would lease to some other totally different operation, something new to the area, then we would certainly need to take a look at that, make sure it conforms with zoning, make sure it conforms with our land use requirements and deal with that.
Thank you very much. Well, so then let me clarify. If we go through with this, if this all passes, then the, some of the agreement will include the ability to lease to the Renaissance Fair, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's, that's been happening out there, Commissioner Robbins, for years. Portions of this property that the SMSC bought were being leased by the Renaissance Festival for parking. So that's been going on for decades.
All right, I didn't quite understand it. Thank you. Thank you.
That was, I just wanted to, I know the Renaissance has got parking issues and if this needs to be listed in here to be spelled out, that, that was, I just want to make sure.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments?
Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. That's a funny motion.
Bringing milk and bread.
Excuse me. Motion. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Henshaw. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. This time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval, I recommend approval of preliminary and final plat of Melkerson addition and the conditional use permit for the SMSC ORF, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report that must be satisfactorily addressed prior to the county board consideration.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. Any further discussion before I call for a vote on the same request? Okay, hearing ended. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Close, yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your presentation and your input this evening. Our next item is our planning manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was informed during the meeting here tonight that we do have someone from the public that is attending the meeting and wishes to address the planning commission. And so we advised her to stick around for this section on the agenda. And as customary at our county board, we do allow folks to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda. And so we thought we would grant that same ability to the resident here tonight. And the county board usually asks for about five minutes as a maximum to make those comments. So we can maybe be consistent with that. So I'll invite the resident up to the podium and address the planning commission.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak briefly with you commissioners. My name is Peggy Donatz and I am a resident of Sand Creek Township. I put my name on here right now. Okay. And I just, I wanted to speak and just put into your minds an area of the county that is an absolute jewel. And you may not know this area. It's right, it's Valley View Drive. And so it's a beautiful, quiet road that goes right along the, the wildlife, the Minnesota Valley Wildlife Refuge. And it's a, you know, little dirt road and it's, it's just, it's lovely. And it's, it's quiet and it's dark at night, dark sky place. And I, I was also not notified of recent movement in this area, but there, there has been some changes planned with industrial activity in this area. And I am just here to speak for two things. Well, first of all, it's, it's in the, within the natural area corridor. And that's an area that the, many of, much of the county documentation stipulates needs to be respected. So that's one thing. And the second thing about this area is it, it is in an area where the glaciers scoured out the upper soils when, when they were here. And when they melted, they left almost nothing there. So anything that hits the surface of the, of the ground is within the aquifer within a matter of days or weeks. Usually this has to, is a process that takes much time, that takes the contaminants out and goes to our aquifer and then we're able to drink the water. And so this is an area that's designated also in the county maps and texts as, as being a specifically sensitive area that, that really needs to be treated with care and not, just not a willy nilly place. And this area, it seems that it's, there's one thought of it, it's not the 169 corridor and it's, it, it's in, it is in a natural area that really does need to be treated carefully. So when, when things come to you in the future of, of, of use in this area, I, I just want you to know that it's not an area like, like any other in the county. And so it, it, it should be protected because of its shallow soils and groundwater. It's designated as such and, you know, and it really is within, within the confines of the natural area corridor. So please, in the future, as you, as you plan and you agree and you, you approve and things, avoid the slippery slope here because it, it's, it's really a, it's a gem. If you haven't been there, it's, it's, it's so, it's so beautiful and it's so fragile for the water and for just everything about it. So please take, take care here. I just feel like I have to warn you that it's, it is a special place.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, if I could? Yeah, thanks for coming down. I appreciate that. Our, our director of planning, Brad Davis, has listened to you as well. I'm trying to get an idea of where that is, but we certainly would.
Okay, well, it's right now, you can go off at 173rd. And then, you see, you don't even know because it's so natural. And it just goes down a, you know, past some fields and then it, and then it turns south and it goes right along the, the Minnesota Valley Wildlife Refuge. Just a stunning view of it. It's just beautiful.
Commissioner Robbins, if you're familiar with where the Scale Regional Training Facility is located?
I am.
It is in that area that she's speaking about.
Exactly where that's at.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
There's also a horse trail down there.
There's a horse trail.
I've had my horses, I've, I've been riding horses there for 34 years.
I've ridden my horses down there as well.
Oh, yeah.
So I know.
So beautiful, really worth, worth our help.
Well, and then one other thing then, you've gotten a hint that there's industrial activity that wants to go there. Did you say that?
Yes, yes. Right now, you know, I, I caught a virus. It wasn't COVID, but it, it attacked my heart. And I drove by there and I saw that they had cleared cut a whole section. And I was in the hospital. It, it broke my heart.
Yeah.
I actually had a heart attack and it was two days after I saw what they had done. So there's something in the works. I don't know, they're not telling me. I must be just slightly outside of the, of the, of the circle where they let people know what's going on, but it, it, now, when they say you, you have a heartbreak, it's, it's real.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Some other updates, commissioners. I can report to you that the county board did approve some projects based on your recommendations. On May 16th, they did approve the rezon and plat of Hunter's Pass that created two lots in Spring Lake Township, Dan and Lori Howe, who are the applicant and property owner. They also approved the Holiday Gas Station plat that we looked at in Jackson Township. Notably, we did follow up with the applicant on a question that came out of this hearing and that was on security cameras. And we were told that, that truck parking area will be under surveillance with cameras. They also approved the rezon of 100 acres from Urban Expansion Reserve to Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster. Bernice Elizabeth Devine were vocal and Trust was the applicant. Last week on June 6th, they approved the rezon and Plymouth Final Plat of Schoenbauer Farm. If you recall, that created 20 lots and seven outlots. In Helena Township is our largest plat that we've approved so far this year. And frankly, I think the last couple of years, I don't recall anything as big as 20 lots. So a sizable development. Also, they approved the Herman Landscaping CUP amendment to add the 46 additional acres to that site. That is it for updates.
Okay, thank you very much. And before of course, I'd just like to thank the staff and commissioners. I think that some of the, some of the items that have come before us in the past few months have required a lot of reading, a lot of study and a lot of understanding. And, you know, the, the items with the cover recycling and how that actually works and understanding those processes, something that takes an education. And I really just want to say kudos to the staff in helping provide that, but also in the commissioners and taking their own time and going out and donating their time to it and seeing sites as it does result in better decisions. So just want to say thank you to everyone.[1773.33]